And join in the Pledge of Legions, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did you want us to pose, Scott?
Whatever you'd like to do.
Be careful.
Yes, yup, alright.
There we go, one, two, three.
Thank you, that's good.
We take it Mike was not ready there. Mike wasn't paying attention.
We'll do one more here. One, two, three. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. So with that said, the pictures are to welcome Sam Quaker. First day here with us, and welcome Sam. Here we go, are you ready? First day on the job with the City of Sheldon, and we're having a council meeting.
Great to be here.
So, let's have a call to order, please.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Sean Brewster.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Thank you. Number one on the agenda, approval. There is no changes. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda that is before you? Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Number two on our agenda is public comments. At this time, are there any public comments? Any of the brown children? Not, no, not yet. Okay, just checking air. So, there are no public. Move on to the consent agenda. Questions, comments, discussion. If there's none, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Support.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
We have no old business to discuss, so moving into new business, we will have our audit presentation for the fiscal year 2017-18. Tom Hendricks is here to share with us the audit report. Everybody, this is exciting. Right, Tom?
Pardon? Yeah, this is exciting.
It's always a pleasure.
Yeah, I like to say, I'm Tom Hendricks, and I'm the manager in charge with Winther's Faving Company and Spencer. We've done the audit for several years. I'll go through it really pretty quick. Page two, three, and four is the audit opinion itself. The financial statements are the responsibility of the city, and our responsibility is to opine on those financial statements. The city reports on the cash basis of accounting, which is not generally accepting accounting principles, but it's easier to understand. Cash basis is much easier to understand. And in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, based on the cash method of accounting. So there's no, this is a clean opinion. It's long, but it's a clean opinion. Page five and six is cash basement statement of activities and net position, and this is citywide, so we report all the funds on this statement. Disbursements are on the left, and then the direct program receipts, charges for services, operating grants, capital grants, and then you have a net. And of course, the governmental activities are all negative, because they are funded primarily by property taxes and other city taxes. So then down below is your general receipts. And then the business type, normally we should show a plus, but there is a bunch of capital projects that got funded by bond proceeds, and that's why it's negative up above. But you come down, and then you've got a total column, and the total receipts exceeded disbursements by about $13 million. So cash went from $7,153,000 to $20,217. Now, that's real deceiving, because the city received a bunch of bond proceeds toward the end of last year, and those funds are going to be spent. So those are, that cash is not something that's excess. It's money we've got that's going to cover construction contracts later this year. Pages seven and eight are statements of cash receipts and disbursements for the governmental funds. So you've got your major funds, your general TIF, local option sales tax, road use, debt service, capital projects, and then the other non-major funds. What I always like to look at is see where the general fund's at. The general fund went up, balance went up $159,800, so there's about $1 million and change in the general fund at the end of the year. And that's a pretty solid general fund. TIF, that's a timing issue. That money is committed to pay TIF debt. Local option sales tax, if you compare last year to this year, it looks like local option sales tax went down by, what'd I say, $80,000, something like that? And it was a timing issue. Two payments came in.
June.
Pardon?
June of the prior year.
June of the prior year. So last year was higher, and this year's lower. So, sales tax proceeds didn't go down that much. Capital projects fund, there was an increase in cash of $1,559,000, but again, those, $2,692, $1,000 is committed to projects. There's a couple of projects, street projects going on. Page nine and 10 is just a breakdown of the cash between restricted and unrestricted, committed, and assigned. Just kind of a breakdown to see where the city intends to spend their money. Page 11 is just a reconciliation between the government-wide statements and the city-wide statements. Page 12 and 13 is a cash receipts and disbursements for the proprietary funds, and that's set out, operating receipts, then not operating disbursements, and then you've got operating, basically, operating income. Water was $292,758. Sewer was $239,313, a total. And then you've got your non-operating receipts and disbursements. And the water side of it, it's just purchase of fixed assets and revenue note payments and interest. And so they had an increase in cash of $6,606 before transfers. Sewer, come down here, and you paid $974,000 in capital assets, which got $11 million worth of bonds. So that cash went up $10 million to $11,509. And that's committed for the waste, majority of that's committed for the wastewater treatment Page 14 is just another reconciliation between the two, the proprietary funds and the citywide. 15 is just a little breakdown of the cafeteria fund. Pages 16 through, whatever. Pages 16 through 30 are the notes to the financial statements. Pretty boring stuff. Note, page, note six on page six. Excuse me. Note 11 on page 28 shows your contracts and other commitments. You had contract total of $10,572. We had only paid out $169,000. So you see, we've got $10,402 of construction contracts yet to be completed. So there's where your cash is going to go. Supplementary information on pages 31 and 32, this is just a breakdown of the non-major Pages 33 and 34 is a statement of indebtedness. And general obligation bonds started out with $9,420. We issued $4,445, paid off $1,235. So our general obligation debt is $12,630 at the end of the year. We issued some tax increment financing notes of $1,225,000. No payments have been made on those. And then the revenue notes, we issued $7,840,000 of revenue notes for the sewer wastewater treatment plant. So our revenue notes at the end of the year are $8,471. Pages 35 and 36 is just the bond and note maturities, so you can see how the bonds and notes are going to get repaid. Pages 37 and 38 is just the 10-year history of general fund receipts and disbursements for the last 10 years. Pages 39 and 40 is the comparison to the budget actual. And you can see that the cash went up to $13 million to $20,217. Disbursements, we went over, the city went over the community and economic development function, and the reason for that is there was a payment, $100,000 payment, that got posted to transfers out. And when Angie went to do the annual report, and I went to do the, we said that transfers in don't equal transfers out. Well, that payment ended up unfortunately going into the community and economic development function. So it was basically budgeted, but it just got budgeted in the wrong place. 42, 43, and 44 is some hyper information. 45, notes to hyper information, so all that's by, you know, ipers. 46 and 47 is our auditors' report on internal control and compliance. This report is required by governmental auditing standards, and we found no interest, no material weaknesses in internal control, and no instances of non-compliance with laws or regulations. 49 and 50 is just other findings that the state auditor requires us to report on, whether there's any violations or not. And other than the going over budget and the community and economic development function, there was no other, and no material comments at all. That's a real quick down and dirty. Questions?
I do not, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you again, Tom. Always a pleasure.
Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure. Angie and her staff do a wonderful job. It's a pleasure to come over here.
Thanks. I agree.
If you have any questions, you know where I'm at, feel free to call anytime. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Any motion to approve?
Thank you, Brad.
Support.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Otherwise, may I have a roll call, please?
Gils.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Thank you. Number five on the agenda, we have a request from the library board. Nicole is not able to be with us today, but Erin is here, and we thank you for coming in. We understand that you have some drawings and a material list provided, and this is for the south side of the building?
Correct.
To prevent any water drainage coming into the newly remodeled library that we just finished, correct? Do you want to give us a brief little synopsis of what this request is? Thank you.
In this last calendar year, we've had quite a bit of flooding in the basement, and some of it was due to a sump pump not working, or a backup sump pump needed. So we've tried to make steps to help prevent those ongoing problems. But one specific time, we, there's a storm drain, with the fire exit goes down into the basement. There's a drain right there, and it got clogged with leaves and debris from the street, and so it wasn't draining, and it just went right into the basement. So, we as a board have just been talking about finding solutions for those problems instead of just band-aiding and reacting. We wanted to be able to respond in a wise way. So, so then this is the quote, and I believe you guys have a copy of the quote?
We have a copy of the quote from Neil Chase. But one question I had was, who's planning to do the work? I don't see that.
I don't have it, yeah.
Okay.
This is just, what you see is just a quote for just the materials.
Okay.
So, we don't have a figure on labor right now, but we wanted to bring it to you guys anyway, just to, to just share with you just that process that we're in of trying to find that permanent solution. So, you've got that information. What I, yeah, what I'd like to do today is just answer any questions you might have, or to be able to take notes of questions you might have that we need to look further into as we, as we go ahead. We know that, given that it's a city building, we have been assured that the city has a role in helping us maintain that. So, I know we have talked about trimming trees, but, oh, you did? Great, you never told me that.
We did.
And of course, they're mature trees, and there's like five of them, so more leaves are coming, you know? It's not like we solved the problem.
Right. It is good to have them trimmed, but the debris still from leaves can cause that to be an issue.
Yep. So, yeah, any questions from you guys as far as things I need to take back to the board?
And what timeframe are they thinking of having something like this built?
Well, obviously not this calendar year, but.
Okay.
I would say, if our biggest culprit in this problem, that I'm sure is going to happen again, is fall leaves. Ideally, we would like to see something done in 2019 before the leaves start falling again.
Okay, so this is something that we might be able to consider then at budget time 2019-20?
Right.
Wow. It just sounds weird to say that. Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that was, one of the questions I had was, we, you know, we had the estimate on materials, which we know that can fluctuate as time goes on, may go up, may go down.
Yep.
Just wondering who may be in mind for contracting. Counsel, did you have any other questions that you would like? Go ahead, Greg.
Beans, this is a fire exit. Has this been approved by the fire marshal?
Putting a, putting a roof on it?
Is it a fire-rated, like the walls, are they fire-rated and such?
Oh, okay.
Given that it's a fire exit, if you need to maintain, I would think there would be a certain.
Okay.
Hourly wall rating and so on, that would have to be maintained, so that that can be used in the event of a fire.
Sure, so if it's a fire exit, make sure it's compliant.
I see there's a lot of, I mean, they've got wood studs, that would, my first clue that it probably would not be.
Okay.
But I'm not a, I'm not a fire marshal, I'm not an expert on that, but I would think, because I think we went through that with the remodeling and stuff too, that didn't we end up needing to get fire marshal's approval on the renovations that were made on the remodel just recently?
Greg, I don't, we didn't, I don't think we had the fire marshal come in.
Well, he may not come in, but just getting their plan, their stamp of approval on the plans, I think, so there may be more involved than just slapping on a cover over that.
Is that something you could help him with, Todd?
I can, I mean, I don't have a relationship, but we can certainly make a phone call.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could talk about that once we find out.
Or would Denny?
We don't do inspections.
Okay. Didn't know if we did that still. Okay.
If that's a fire marshal.
Yeah, I would think, good question, if that is a fire exit, make sure it's compliant with whatever those codes may or may not be, whatnot. And that is not handicap accessible, correct? That's because when you walk in, you have to go up or down. So that's just an extra entry exit. Alright.
Out of the basement.
Right. So mostly, it's to just keep from the elements to clogging that drain, so the drain doesn't then back up into the basement?
Then the whole basement is.
Yeah. Well, I was pleasantly surprised to see the material list only at $1,300, so it would be wonderful if we could find a contractor to do some goodwill services to the library.
And maybe this is a question that I should ask you guys right now, given that if, when we did the remodel, we had to open ourselves up for competitive bids and take time to put that out there, is the process of that still be applicable in this case?
This would be vertical infrastructure, I think, and the cutoff is currently in the $57,000 range.
This would be well under the need for that.
So then you would be okay? Alright. Go ahead, Ted.
Well, just a couple of things. I think this conversation started based on the phone call we had of what, you know, what can be done.
Right.
But, probably, from a council standpoint, are you okay with a white steel covering on the southwest, southeast corner of the building? And the rest of the building is?
Brick.
Is brick, and this is going to stick out, look like a tin shed on the side of the building? So, I think before they do that, we ought to figure out if that's something we're willing to stomach or not, because the price point changes considerably if you want to cover it, but you want to do it with something that matches the current library.
Yeah, I think that example and budgeting process coming up, I think you need to look into it, so it looks nice with the building, and then bring it back at the budget time.
Sure. So that way, we can have a few different options.
And you need to also have the labor into it, too.
Well, that's another thing. I mean, if you're talking about just building a steel enclosure with wood studs over top of that, that's something my staff could easily do. But, if that's not, to Greg's point, fire-rated, or all of a sudden, if you want brick work done, you know, something that looks like the current building, that's not something we're capable of doing. We don't have that skill set.
So maybe, you know, that's, this is a good option, but then looking into other aesthetics. What's the look that we want? Do we really want a white, like you said, steel structure just sitting out there?
I think that's the council's.
Exactly. And that's, I would like to see if the library could check into then, different options.
And have another bid on it.
Blend better aesthetically, sure.
Okay.
You know, it's possible you could get a brick here, that could maybe look better, but yet have cost down.
Sure.
If you want to go with real brick or something like that. I'm not saying that for sure, but I think it's possible.
Just something that looks a little more pleasing. Okay. That'd be great. Yeah, and then if you could bring that back to us before budget time, that would be wonderful.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments she can bring back to the library?
I think the tin shed on the side, I don't think that's the route to go.
No.
Not with that, I mean, that's a brick building, it's kind of a fixture in the community.
Mm-hmm.
I think we want to do it up a little nicer.
And with the cost just completed with the renovations, yeah, let's see what we can do to make sure that that doesn't become a problem or damage anything more. Wonderful.
Does that mean that this project is going to be like?
Well, so what we would like you to do is see, let's get some other bids.
Okay.
And.
Other ideas.
Other ideas, and then the blessing time comes at budget.
I think the first step would be to contact the fire marshal, see if he has required it, because if they require draw, engineered drawings, then it's going to be more than just, you know, something more involved than what we have here.
Yeah.
And then from there, we'll probably kind of determine your path, where you go.
Okay.
Yeah, because you're going to have different door closers, door hardware, than just a knob, you know, on that exit door. So I think there's a little bit more research that has to be done, and then bring it back on that type of stuff, looks, fire marshal.
Okay. Being the outside of the building, I didn't even think about fire marshal, so I appreciate you bringing that up, yeah.
Okay.
To answer your question, Erin, you asked about who's paying to make it prettier. I think what you're maybe misunderstanding is, they're asking you to get a quote that looks nicer, and they're asking you to bring it to them at budget time, which means that it could be consumed within the library's own budget, or it could be potentially additional funding if they so choose to. I think at this point, probably either possibility is there.
Okay.
But you're not going to get an answer until you have.
Right.
A full plan.
This is the start of the beginning.
Yes. And we appreciate you. We know you like to hear things well in advance.
Yes, and that's why we appreciate you coming to us now.
Okay.
And that we can continue to work on that, and look at it at budget time then.
Okay.
Okey-dokey, thanks, Erin. And good job, kids, thank you very much. You guys did awesome sitting there. Are you going to go? You don't want to stay? Alright. That's only five of the six, right? Awesome. Thank you very much, Erin, for coming in. Bye. That's cute. Alright, next, we are on to number six. We have some information that Jared Johnson is here with the O'Brian County Emergency Management, and Dakota Brown is here from SCAT. Jared, what I'm going to ask is, if you could bring us up to date where things might be at with Archer and their ambulance, and then what I would like to propose is that, after you let us know that, I would like to see Sam and a couple of our council get together with you, SCAT, and a couple people from Archer to further discuss this, but would you mind coming up to the podium and just letting us know where Archer's at with their ambulance services? Dakota, yeah, you too, you don't get to sit there. I know. And then, just so you know, I welcome this conversation to continue, and then we can come back to our council with maybe a better game plan on options that are available, because right now, everyone is still kind of iffy. Archer is not for sure yet, but I'll let you elaborate on that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Welcome, Sam, to the area. I met you once at the kickoff meeting here in town for the disaster stuff, so.
Justin Criss speaks very highly of you.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, he's a nice guy, very nice guy. But yeah, welcome to the community. So I'm here tonight, this summer, when Archer ambulance started having some issues with ambulance coverage due to staffing, you know, they ran into the issue of not having enough staff to run the ambulance, so the ambulance was pretty much kept in the garage for, you know, last, since June. So what happened was, Kevin Miller's been kind of their interim director, updating plans, policies. We ended up having a few meetings for the public to see if anyone from Archer would be interested in taking the emergency medical responder class, or the emergency medical technician class. And we also did, Kevin actually did some door-to-door, explaining what is EMS, what are the volunteer hour requirements, time commitments, things like that. At first, there were some people that were possibly interested. After reaching out to them again, a lot of them were no longer interested at the time. So, last month, the Archer City Council did revisit it, and at that point, they decided to, effective end of December, they're going to disband their ambulance, which will mean they will no longer have their ambulance service. On average, each year, Archer ambulance goes on around 20 calls a year. This year, from January through June, they had gone on six calls. SCAT has covered three calls in Archer throughout this calendar year at this point in time. So, what Archer ambulance is looking at right now, I've kind of been tasked to, I've already cleaned out their whole ambulance bay. The ambulance that they do have is actually located in Sanborn right now, in their emergency services building, so it's kept safe, kept warm. And the equipment's going to be dispersed at our next Waseemso meeting, the O'Brian County EMS Association meeting next week, so we're going to have that laid out, and services that may need supplies, additional supplies can pick from that at that time. That's what the Archer City Council decided. The ambulance itself is the next item on their agenda. Next week, there could be a meeting, on Tuesday, they moved their meeting from Monday to Tuesday, and they're going to decide what the process is going to be for selling it. So they kind of asked me to go, they would like to sell it locally to a community that could use another ambulance. So they kind of tasked me with searching throughout O'Brian County to see who would possibly be interested in purchasing the used ambulance. The ambulance is a Ford, 1999 Ford Type III ambulance, currently has 111,874 miles. The ambulance itself actually used to be the old SCAT II that was traded in before the new SCAT I was purchased. So it's an ambulance that is familiar to the volunteers on the Sheldon ambulance team. But no, I really like your suggestion of doing some more discussion and meeting to kind of, yeah, help answer other questions that any of you have.
Is it possibly that Archer could postpone, because I believe they want sealed bids next week already?
No, they're going to have some discussion next week of when to set the date.
Okay.
When to do posting, where to post, things like that. So it's just initial, initial discussion.
Is it something that they can postpone this until we meet and discuss this?
Um, I could ask. I can definitely ask.
Okay.
And then, you know, is it the medical stuff they're getting rid of that has expiration dates, or what equipment is it?
The equipment that is more, like, yeah, there's mask, splints, the automatic cot that's in the ambulance, and the backboards, and the stair chair are going to stay with the ambulance as a unit. The. The O2 tanks are going back to the vendor that they were supplied from. Otherwise, you had kind of their medical kit with glucose paste, activated charcoal, all those different things. Those are the things that we're going to be giving out to the other services so they can be used before they get expired. Good question. The Archer fires remaining the way they are, it's just the ambulance that is disbanding, so.
Okay. Now, the other thing I think if we put a committee together, it'd be nice to have somebody, this also entails some of the county, also entails funding from the county.
Tom Farnsworth is still a supervisor till the year end, correct?
Yeah. I think there's been some issues with them. I would assume another supervisor. But I think they're worthy to be in this conversation, too, because there's also funding that goes with this ambulance.
Through the county, right. Yes.
So there's a lot of pieces in this puzzle that we need to figure out.
Yeah, and that's why I think it's a little premature for us to decide what do we or don't we want to do until we can actually sit down and have a better conversation.
And I think that conversation's got to be met with Archer's council and our council and come up with a plan. Because the way I read in the paper, the plan's already been made, and I think that needs to come before the council, before we say, yes, we're going to take your community over. I'm into helping people, but I do believe that there's a financial responsibility from the city of Archer when they give up this ambulance. If they want us to service their community, they have some stake in this game.
Right. And that's where the discussion can flow, too. That's why I think we're a little premature to make a decision.
So I think this process needs to be slowed way down.
Sure.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not about not helping out people when they're in need, because I'm in the fire service. I'm all about helping people, but we need to do this financially responsible.
Sure.
They are entitled to just walk away from their ambulance service and just give it up without any financial commitment to somebody to do that service for them. It's like buying insurance.
So Jared, I'm going to, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Just to clarify for the record, you're speaking to the issue of both providing services and the acquisition of the ambulance?
Yes.
You see them as kind of meshed?
They worked, yes.
Okay. I just, I wanted to clarify your comments.
What I would like to do is invite Sam and Jared, circle of discussions so that we can, and if it's possible, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
We don't want to rush into anything, but knowing Archer is planning to discuss that, we need to begin that conversation soon as well. So task number one. I know you've already been tasked, busy today, so.
And I'm in the process over this month. I'm trying to get on the Sanborn City Council meeting for next week.
Okay.
I'm going to a few different communities to see who'd be, 2011, the mutual aid agreement that's been set up, lines were kind of drawn for subdivisions. Sheldon has been covering Archer, the city limits, and part of the rural territory. Part of the rural territory has been covered by Primgar and also Sanborn for the last seven. Sheldon's been assisting coverage for several years. What our plan is, in the 911 system, right now, we're keeping that map because ambulance service has to be paged.
Sure.
So we're going to keep on.
A lot of that stuff, I don't know any of that. I just know if I call 911, somebody's going to come. So, but again, that's part of the pieces of puzzle that we need to work out together.
Yeah.
And then we'll come back to see where everybody's at.
Absolutely. And then what I did have to do, I did have to send a letter to IDPA just to let them know that, you know, once they're disband, since they are disbanding, that there still is ambulance coverage in that area.
Sure.
So that we've had in place since 2011 is going to continue unless we hear otherwise.
Okay, sounds good.
I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you. Dakota, you don't just get to walk away. Jared, we're going to have her turn.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
How's your volunteer base?
Good.
Good?
Yeah.
Could you use more volunteers?
Could we? Absolutely. You can always use more, but we're running good right now.
Good.
What is the total number of members you have?
Yeah, how many members are on your
Curious.
I wasn't ready for that question. Um, anywhere from 20, 25, 30, around there.
Okay.
That includes the fire that is on our roster also.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. We just want you to stand up there and not get a chance to speak, so.
And if you're interested, calls this year, the ambulance team has had 587, and has been included, 603 patients totals. Because sometimes there may be more than one patient on a call.
Sure. We've actually, sorry.
No, go ahead.
We've actually had 13 calls just this month, and today's the fifth. So we're quite busy.
Busy, yeah.
How does that compare to when we had only SCAT, not the other ambulance service?
Yeah, without Midwest Transfer, how does?
Good question. I don't know, like, three, four years ago or whatever. I'm not sure how many years they've been there.
That's a great question. I hadn't started as EM, started as EMA in 2016, so I am not, I could check to see.
Be curious to see how that's affected SCAT.
Yeah, since they're a private entity, I'm not sure if they would share the number of calls they've been on, but
Well, just we can look at SCAT's calls.
Yeah, we can look at SCAT's calls.
Gone down considerably. I mean, revenues have gone down, so I'm assuming calls have gone down.
The call volume, it looks like the call volume's gone up.
I was going to say, I think their call volume's gone up.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'd be amazed at how often it's going off.
That's good to know, because that's a question that I had in my mind.
That's something else that comes in the background. Yep. Okay. I know the other day Brad had shared with me and Dakota, Jared, you could probably elaborate, too. There was a time when we had no ambulance in town because they were both busy out of town doing whatever.
Actually, to elaborate with that, just this year alone, SCAT I and SCAT II have been out, both on transfers, 17 times. So that means 17 times this past year. Sheldon's been without me. It's kind of why we're delving into.
Sure, looking into other possibilities. Okay.
That's why I think this conversation on that, staffing.
Yep. There's a lot to go into.
There's a lot going on with this. You're not only involving the ambulance, you're involving other emergency services. There's a whole big picture that needs to encompass in this thing.
Awesome. Sounds good.
Thank you, Jared.
I was going to let you, are you on the agenda for that one item?
Okay.
Do you want me to stay for that? Okay. Todd and I spoke today about, so about a month ago, a little over a month ago, I was contacted by Iowa Homeland Security about, so every year, the emergency management division at the state level, they do acquire assets that they decide where to distribute those. So this year, we have used Homeland Security water pumps a few times in O'Brian County. We used the Clay County one twice this year. So they did note that we had used the pump several times, and they offered, they had purchased several. So we did acquire one for our area. It's going to be housed here in Sheldon, so thank you for housing that. I've been contacting. Todd and I have been in contact with that. But it's a six-inch pump, pumps over 2,000 gallons per minute. It's about a $40,000 water pump on a trailer, has a GPS system, sends data to Des Moines. It also tracks where you're moving with the pump, so you can track where it's located.
So nobody should borrow it because they'll know if it's
But it's something, it's a resource that we can utilize here in O'Brian County, and then also just like what happened this summer where we had to borrow another county's if another county needs it in an emergency situation. It's something I would come pick up and transport, so, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
It's a huge asset to our community and the county, and I'm quite thankful that Jared and Homeland Security were able to land that for us, because it's, that'll be nice the next time we have a big storm.
Which we hope isn't for a long time.
I hope it sits there and we never start it, but
Yeah, at least in a hundred years.
Sure, it starts.
Well, yeah, okay. We'll check that once in a while. I hope we never have to use it in an emergency pumping situation.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Dakota. Have a good evening. Thanks for coming in, and we'll be in touch with you soon, Samuel. All right, thank you. Yeah, we'll coordinate that. Thank you. Okay, number seven on our agenda, we have the consideration of approval for change order number one. This is on the airport snow removal equipment building, and this is a reduction, correct, Todd, of 2,094?
That is correct. It's a deduct for removal of a testing procedure in the foundation that was deemed unnecessary.
Wonderful. Thank you. So do we have a motion to approve change order number one in the amount of $2,094?
So moved. Support.
And a roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Kent.
Number eight, consider approval of pay estimate number one on the airport's snow removal equipment building in the amount of $67,531.46.
So moved.
Support.
How are they coming out there, Todd? I know it's for a while, just was the framing, and they haven't enclosed now yet, or?
I have not been out there this week, but I do believe it is enclosed. And I think they had hoped to have it maybe occupable or able to put stuff in it by the end of the month.
Good.
Yeah. And they had a slow start due to the wet weather, and we did have some subgrade issues, and we made some changes to get good soil testing before we poured footings, but they're moving along okay now.
Awesome. Any other discussion?
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Number nine, the consideration of approval to change order number four on the wastewater treatment facility. Again, a deduct of $1,329. Roof access and overhead door operator.
There's actually two deducts and one adder, but it ends up to be a total deduct.
Right.
But, yeah, the bar screen roof access, they had a very elaborate hatch in the roof where the bar screening could be pulled out at a later date. That, in the long run, it was really pretty, but not very functional. We came up with a cheaper, better way to do it. In our opinion, that hatch, that roof should need to open for 25 to 30 years. So we're actually just going to put cast in place piece back in there, rough right over it, so I don't have the roof penetration. 20 years later, I'll cut a hole in the roof and patch the roof right there. We feel like the contract and the engineer feels like it's going to be a better solution, less chance for leaks.
Wonderful.
And the removal of the overhead door operator, that's in one of the chem operator. Need to be an explosion proof operator based upon, it was not specified that way, so we just removed the, because an explosion proof operator is really, really expensive, or that we plan to use very frequently. So roll it up, pull it down ourselves. We're okay with that. And before the circuit for the overhead door at the UV building, this is one that we actually think will use more often. We're not having them include in an opener, but we did want the electricity there, because it'll never get cheaper than now to get it run there when they're running wiring in that room. Our request from city staff. So all things totaled, it's a deduct of $1,329. If you accept that, the project would be, let's see, over by what, about $1,700 total? And we're $3 million at the project, so I'm pretty happy about that.
Nice to hear that. All right, thank you for that update. Do we have a motion then to consider change order number four?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Next on our agenda, consider approval of an on-call engineering contract. This is with the airport and with McClure. And I am not going to try to buffalo my way into explaining why we have to do this, but Todd can.
Sure.
Thanks. Pass the buck.
Essentially, as a requirement of receiving federal funding at the airport, you are supposed to do every five years, request for proposal from different engineering firms, and you are supposed to rate them and enter into contract with one of them based upon your system. So they have certain criteria that we had to rate the firms by. So we sent out to, I believe, like 16 different firms. The airport commission received three proposals. They reviewed those proposals. And really, you're not even supposed to look at financial advantage or disadvantage when you do them. That's not what the FAA wants you looking at. They want you looking at the most qualified candidate you can get. At the end of the day, after looking at the requests, McClure has been the engineer at the airport for like 18 years. The FBO and the people on the commission are highly satisfied with the services they've been receiving from McClure, and so they would like to continue to do work with McClure. So this contract just states that they're our on-call engineer for the next five years, does not determine fees, because those fees are to be negotiated on a per-project basis. And it tells you what they're doing for us if you read through the whole thing.
All right.
I would recommend approval.
So moved.
Support.
So there's no cost now, it's just on when we call them?
Correct. And we're specifically doing this because it's a requirement, the FAA, when you do their federal funding, or use their federal funding. Not doing this, not doing the process that we just got done with to get to this contract, could jeopardize your
All right. Any other discussion? A roll call, please.
Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Number 11, consider approval of procurement policy for the June FEMA disaster. This, as Angela has helped me to explain this so easily, it's a requirement from Homeland Security. It tells us how we are to spend the federal dollars that we would, will receive from the June flooding disasters. So necessary paperwork that we must go through and approve. Any questions regarding the procurement policy?
We haven't gotten any word on if we get any funding or
In your business.
We are, yeah.
Negotiating.
We are, we're still in the process. I mean, we have, we have applied.
Yeah.
We currently have weekly meetings with a FEMA representative. He did, not this week, we didn't, because I told him not to come, but, so we're going through the steps. Some of the projects we applied for, I think, are no brainers and will be easily funded for. I'm not so hopeful on others, but when we know more, we'll report more.
And just to be clear, this is for, what we were out as the city?
Yeah, we applied for emergency pumping, so pump hours, man hours, overtime hours, that kind of sort of thing. We applied for the wells that we lost
Right.
due to the flooding. We applied for some damage to the trail bridge that crosses the Floyd River by NCC, and we applied for the landscape area directly to the east of the trail bridge there. Some of that, I'm quite positive we're going to end up being denied on. Some of that, I'm quite positive we're going to receive funding.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we're clear on, because there's individual, people, individuals could apply for relief and help from FEMA and other avenues as well. I just want to make sure this is about what the city incurred as a loss, so.
That is correct.
Okay. Need a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Further discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
And now, drum roll, please, as we go on to number 12 with our capital improvement plan. I hope you have all taken the time to read through what each department has put in for requests as we can help use this tool in our future planning as far as budgets, et cetera. One thing we want to point out on the administration side, do you mind?
Go ahead.
Thank you. In the fiscal year 19, we have planned, and it's been there for a while, for a new telephone system. This new telephone system may need to take place sooner rather than later. Ours is an ancient dinosaur and could die at any moment, literally. So you have been getting estimates? Ange has been securing some estimates on what it would take to replace and update our phone plan, because if we go down, we are, you are down as well as, so the fire, excuse me, police is down, city would be down, SCDC would all be down if one little thing goes wrong with our ancient phone system. So though we have that on the capital improvement plan for the next year, it's something that we might have to that we might have to, uh, look into sooner rather than later. But, um, going through the capital improvement plan, um, I guess we can take it step-by-step administration, et cetera. Any questions on, on what is in there? Does anybody have any questions? Do you want to go through step-by-step? Do we take time to read through this?
I just want to point out one thing, and it has nothing to do with any of my departments, but I did want to point out in the airport, that that, that 3.6 million, since that's such a big number, that is assuming we get the 100% funding.
Right, thank you.
We do not get funded on that application. We'll have the opportunity to decide whether or not we would want to do it at a 90/10 rate, or whether we would want to back off to the original plan. You'll be getting an updated capital improvement plan from the airport, five-year plan, um, next council meeting that you'll be asked to approve, because we have to amend it, because we're asking for the 100% funding, but please understand, we only plan on that if it's 100% money. We've talked about it before, it's the, it's the runway rehabilitation, it's the taxiway rehabilitations, but, so, we're showing it there now because we're going to get the 100% money on 3.6 million. I don't know if that's really going to happen or not, but that's what we asked for.
Right. Yes, so, I have a couple of questions. If we approve this tonight, can it be amended later? Or can we approve it later at the next one?
This doesn't really hold much merit. This is just a guide that we use for a budget.
Yeah.
I was going to say.
It's not set in stone, this is our dream.
It's a, it's a working plan.
It's in the library on the list.
It's, it gets modified every year. You approve a five-year plan that modifies your.
And we take stuff off it, we put stuff on it.
Yeah.
Both ways.
Back a year.
Yeah. So, one thing to point out there, this doesn't mean we're going to spend this, if you, if you've read it, it's just our dream. It's like your Santa's list, you know, what do you want for Christmas? And what are you going to get?
It's also good, it's also good for the departments to look into the future of what they have going on.
Will we be getting libraries?
You know, so, i- it's good in that aspect, because you make people look into the future of what their departments are going to do.
Right.
It's a planning document.
Give everybody a roadmap to look five years out, correct?
I do have one question.
Yes.
Where is your park?
Where's my park?
The mayor's, mayor's park.
Right down here.
Oh, it's right here out front.
Oh, this little?
Yeah, I have my own park.
That's your park?
Yeah.
We're going to get a playground, and we're going to get a job, I'm just kidding. To be honest with you, Greg, I just found out, I just found out that was the mayor's park. I'm just going to be out there shaking hands.
People crash because they're looking at.
I don't know why, Greg, but it's always been called the mayor's park.
Go after the marketing funds for that one, Mayor.
Yeah. That's funny that.
Right, right outside the door.
I think when they remodeled the, the community building.
Has benches and bushes.
They put that park in.
The little, we used to have a Christmas tree. We got chopped down.
There's a sign there now with December events. That's the mayor's park.
Sorry, Todd. We had to chop it down, it was sick. How's that? So, now we have beautiful park benches and landscaping for people to sit and enjoy, but yeah, we would love to have a sign out there.
Administration.
And not be holding one. So, do you have any questions? I've, I do hope you've all taken the time to read through. Again, it's something that we can use as a tool as we dream, it's nothing set in stone that this is for sure what we are going to do. But we did want to point out, the phone issue may come up sooner rather than later.
The, the only question I had, and I visited with Angie a little bit about it, is, and I know why it's in there, some of it's for some staff. I don't understand staff in the capital improvement plan.
Where's that at?
But it's, for.
Oh, thank you.
Ambulance, and then also.
Oh, yes.
Police. I know it's to put the carrot in front of us, but I don't see staff as capital improvement.
So noted, thank you. All right. Comments, question, yes, Pete?
One other comment. We're starting a process tomorrow to plan a, a, a park addition out around the pavilion area.
Crossroads.
Does that impact this? Or will we revise it again next year? I would assume we'll have to throw it in if we ever decide to do something.
So, so actually, it was in last year's plan with just a, um, as, as a placeholder. Uh, it's not in this year's plan, but one, one part of what this process that you're explaining, Pete, is going to do is hopefully help us get to a number. I believe when we get there, then it has to find a home here, but at least the number will mean something.
Okay.
And I think that's why we chose to leave it out of this year's, because the number really didn't mean anything. So, it's kind of scary to have a several-million-dollar number that you really have no validation for.
So, if Pete sits on that committee, is he going to call that one Pete's Park then?
No.
Possible, but.
No, that's not Mayor Trish's Park, it's just Mayor's.
Yeah, I'm also on that committee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Touche.
Flip it for it.
Donations for naming rights.
Pete's Park has a better ring to it.
Pete's Park. All right, I think we're getting slap-happy. So, um, any back, questions, uh, let's, we'll take a motion to approve this. Again, this is something that can be modified as we go on, but it's our steering to budget season.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Thank you.
Support.